This is, I'm calling to order our regular August 22nd, 2012 meeting. I'd just like to apologize, we had set the meeting for 6:30 because we were having a member of the Mass Association of School Committees come and talk to us for the first hour with the latest happenings in the state, three major issues. He ran into a family emergency and was unable to make it at the last minute, and so we'll do this again in September, we'll have him come in September. But we're sorry for the mix-up on WCTV and putting this, we wanted to make sure that we could get it on live. So that's why we're starting it like halfway in between. Okay. Linda, all members present except Mr. Mullis. Mr. Mullis apologizes to the board and he's away on business and it couldn't be helped, and so he said to please let you know that. Okay, approval of items by consensus. Superintendent Benton?
Good evening. There are five items on the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of June 27th regular session, June 27th executive session not for release, approval of the field trip, high school band trip to Meredith, New Hampshire, and high school AP biology to New York, acceptance of an IBM donation and warrant CF1001R201, payroll 620.
Could we, excuse me, could we just leave off the payroll and do that afterwards?
Sure.
Because two of us can't do that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion for the items on the consent agenda to that point. Dr. Quick?
Motion to approve the minutes of June 27th, 2012, regular session, June 27th, 2012, executive session not for release, approval of the field trip to high school, to Meredith, New Hampshire, approval of the field trip to New York, IBM donation, and the fifth one, warrant as read.
Yes, thank you. Do we have a second? Second, Mrs. Bonish, thank you. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, abstain. Okay, thank you. Six in favor, one abst- no, there can't be, five in favor and one abstain, please, Linda. Okay, and...
Motion to approve payroll 620, 12, 7412, 71812, 8112, and 81512.
Okay, can we have a motion? Mr. Hayes?
Motion to approve the payroll as read by the superintendent.
And a second, Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, four in favor and two abstain. Thank you. Our next item was the MASC, Mike Gilbert, so we'll bypass that and go to the superintendent's report.
See, I have six items on the agenda this evening. I included in your packet a personnel report, and if you notice, the list at the bottom has a lot of open positions. We've been very busy. We have hired 23 new staff members this, to date. Unfortunately, we've had six resignations in the past three weeks, so we've, we're really working hard to try and get all the staffing in place for that. There's no control over resignations, and unfortunately, people can do it right up to the first day of school. It's been a very busy summer. Today, we completed our Leadership Institute, and we actually had Andy Law from the legal department come talk about the new laws and the evaluation system. The new discipline law that was passed by the state, unfortunately, and I say unfortunately because it's, that law is not a friend to education. It goes into effect in 2014, but it really impacts the life of a principal and all the paperwork that needs to happen. For example, if one suspends a first grader for a day, which can happen, we have to provide educational tutoring for any child that's suspended. And before, any child that was expelled could not, did not need to, was not allowed to attend another public school, now they can. And the period of expulsion has been shortened, so I don't know what the state was thinking, but I think this is going to really be an interesting path to watch as we move forward. So we had a lot of, um, outside work done in the buildings this summer. Shashin got a facelift inside with a new coat of paint, and it does look great. We also had a couple of roofs replaced at the Wildwood and at the West. And again, kudos to the town manager and Department of Public Buildings for all their assistance this summer. The, I'll do my tour of the buildings on Friday, but want to publicly thank all the custodians because what I have seen, the schools really are sparkly clean, and we appreciate all the work that they do. It was tough for the high schools because they expected not to be doing the gym. We had hoped that it would be knocked down by now, so they had a, they waited till the very end, but everything would be ready for us to welcome all the students on Tuesday. Last week, Paul hosted the annual school readiness meeting. We met with Police, Fire, Public Buildings and Public Works Department, and also North Green Transportation. All the bus routes are on the website today and in the paper. Excuse me. And the police, as you can see from the sign out on Church Street, have been out in force reminding people that school will be opening to slow down, and we're looking forward to Tuesday morning. Again, new teacher orientation is tomorrow, and Kate Burnham is, will be conducting the workshop. And lastly, opening day for staff on Monday, middle school auditorium at 8:30. We hope that school committee members can attend.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions or comments? Okay.
Next in the packet is the Professional Development Book and Plan. This is required by the state. We need to have a professional development plan approved and filed with the DESE. Kate did a great job, and all of this is going to be online.
Do you have any other questions? Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I did have a comment, if you don't mind. Thanks, Truom Kane. I just wanted to take 60 seconds to thank Assistant Superintendent Burnham and the Professional Development Committee for all their hard work, and I agree with Superintendent Benton when she writes in the Professional Development Handbook that a school system's most important asset is its teaching force, and the most important investment a school committee can make in the school system is to ensure that teachers continue to learn and grow. High-quality professional development is essential to Wilmington's goal of high standards of learning for every child. Nearly 80% of what the school department spends, 80 cents of every dollar, goes towards personnel costs and professional development costs. On the other hand, make up roughly only 0.2, 0.3% of the budget. So if you stop and think about it, the return on investment the district receives from its professional development program, from both a financial and an educational perspective, is tremendous. And what's particularly impressive is about Wilmington's professional development program is the efficiency and effectiveness of which it runs on. According to the DESE, we spend well below the state average on professional development, $26 per pupil in Wilmington versus $238 per pupil in Massachusetts, yet teacher satisfaction levels with a professional development program are in most cases at or above the state average. And in your report, you outline many efficiencies that save the district money when it comes to professional development, such as the Wilmington University model, coordinating and cooperating with other school districts through joint trainings, conducting the teacher mentoring program, and attaining grant funding for many PD projects and initiatives. And so if there's anything, anything, that the school committee can do to make a great professional development program, an even better one, whether it's through the budget or through policy, please don't hesitate to ask us, and thank you and your committee again for running such a professional, such a successful professional development program.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Any other comments? What I like about this book is for the staff, that this is really a staff-oriented book, and we used to have to go and gather all of these pieces of information that you have here with the, um, the goals and the plans, and, but also what each of the teachers has to do for a template and keep the record of professional development. I think that's terrific that it's really geared towards the staff, and I think that's really important. So, thank you, Mrs. Burnham. Any other comments, supervisions? Okay.
Next, we have to produce...
Oh, wait a second, I'm sorry. We want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we want to move, right? So that, I wasn't sure if this went with this, or they're two separate things?
No, it all goes together, yes.
Okay. So we're voting on both the blue and the green right now, and I would entertain a motion to approve the 2012, 2013 Professional Development Plan. Dr. Quick? Motion to approve the 2012, 2013 Professional Development Plan. Do we have a second? Oh my gosh, Ms. Burns. I forgot, I was saying, I'm sorry. Mrs. Burns, second. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda, thank you. Okay.
State also requires us to produce an annual district curriculum accommodation plan. Would she happy for you, and you two vote approval?
Does anyone have any comments? Yes, Ms. Burns.
Just a quick question pertaining to the EPP portion as it relates to children on IEP. I do understand that if an EPP is submitted to the parent, for, there's a need, an IEP team does need to take place in order for this to be, acquire the accommodation. Is there any concern with the scheduling of that meeting, of the need and it being implemented in the classroom before it can happen? Because sometimes getting, it can't happen depending on time, I guess this actually, you're not going to worry about, beginning of the year or in the middle of the year, meetings can be very tough to schedule, and I just didn't know, are there any concerns or any provisions that an IEP meeting to address this portion can, will be executed within a reasonable amount of time so that it could be implemented quickly in the classroom? Or effectively, yeah, quickly in the classroom?
Just for the audience sake, an EPP is an educational proficiency plan which has been developed for high school students who have not passed MCAS. We have an avenue to try and provide them with support so that they can, in some cases, present a portfolio, or we can do an appeal. We've got two of them this year, for students who have been one point away from passing the test and have taken it so many times. By law, we have to implement immediately, so we have to make sure that...
So that turnaround will be...
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
Good question.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? This is another booklet in which you have the checklist for the students, the observation checklist. We have everything that we could possibly need to understand how this is happening. It makes me think, I don't remember us doing this a long, a few years ago, it's just we are becoming more and more inundated with state-approved or state wanting to have us fill out these things, and it just seems incredible that the teaching staff and the administrators have to deal with this in addition to everything else, but let's hope it's making a difference. So, any other questions for Mrs. Burnham? We also, all right. I entertain a motion to approve the 2012, 2013 Wilmington Public Schools District Accommodation Plan. This is Burns.
I make a motion to approve the 2012, 2013 Wilmington Public School District Accommodation Plan.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? Second, thank you. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay.
Next in your packet is just a preliminary report that's not fully released until the end of September on the new replacement for adequate yearly progress. Now, we have progress and performance index. So if you recall, we used to be working on adequate yearly progress with No Child Left Behind, with No Child Left Behind law running out. This is the replacement. So Kate will be doing a report at the end of September when this information can be released to the public. But we wanted to have background information for you because it's very different than how AYP was figured out, so.
Could I ask you, is this the actual report you get from the state, or did you put this together for us?
Kate?
Some pieces of it basically were pulled from the document that was generated by the state to help administrators understand the new measure. I tried to pull the most pertinent pieces of it into a smaller document.
Wow, that's fantastic. Thank you very much. All right. Our next order of business is this superintendent's report number six.
The last item in my packet is summer professional development under the direction of Kate Burnham. We had a lot of interesting summer institutes that happened in town and outside of town, including individual staff members doing curriculum work to Susan McDiilghood in ELL, Dr. Curtis Bates coming to do a workshop, two-day workshop on core components of TID instruction. That was quite favorably received. Update, more work on foreign language curriculum, which is on the curriculum renewal cycle in health and PE. And also, we sent 15 teachers to Burlington, approximately? Close to that. Burlington High, Burlington, Bedford, and Andover sponsored a technology summit, and we had 15 teachers attend that as well. So, kudos to Kate and to all the teachers that took advantage of these opportunities.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that? Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is new business policies.
The, again, this referred, the first two policies have to do with a change in the law. As of July 1st, all nondiscrimination policies must include gender equity as part of, no person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school in any town or in obtaining the advantage, privileges, and courses of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, and now, gender equity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability. So policies AC, ACA, GBA, GCF, IJ, JBA, JFBB...
And JB.
And JB have all been put in place to add gender equity, gender identity. So we need approval of those policies.
Okay, and, but not the executive session?
We need them all of them. I just, I opened with that, sorry. Executive session changes the law about open reading, and then Michael's Law, which is the new school emergency response plans, which have to be filed with the state. It says September 1st in your packet, but because of Labor Day, it's September 4th. All school districts have to have a medical emergency plan. In addition, each school has to have a medical emergency plan. All of the principals are working on those plans. We'll have them to meet by Friday, and we will submit, once you approve, this piece to the state. In addition, Dorian Crowe gets a lot of kudos for putting together the AED plan, which is in this packet as well. That goes along with it.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on these? Mr. Hayes?
Not a question, but just a comment, just so the rest of the board knows. The policy subcommittee did meet three times this summer, and all these policies were discussed, and, you know, essentially, they're essentially verbatim what MASC is requesting us to do, so, just we follow the normal procedure.
So then, I would entertain a motion to accept the MASC policy update recommendations. One, two, three, and four. Dr. Quick?
Motion to accept the MASC policy update recommendations, one, two, three, and four.
Second, Mrs. Bonish. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda, thank you. I just want to say that on our agenda, you'll see one policy, Section B, School Board Governance and Operations, that's still being worked on by the policy subcommittee, so we've removed that for tonight. Okay, now, our next item of new business is superintendent's goals and system goals.
I've enclosed in the packet this evening a draft of the goals that I would like to concentrate on for this year. The top priority regards to student learning really has to do with making sure that we adopt the common core curriculum and provide teachers with the support that they need in order to carry that out in the classroom. As far as adult learning, we're not a race to the top school system, so we have one more year to implement a new evaluation plan, and that's my top priority. The association has already notified us that they want to sit to negotiate that. I recommend that we put together, that I put together a committee of administrators to work with the committee from the WTA before we bring in any school committee or lawyers to the process. The, Andy was at our workshop this morning and actually did a great job of reviewing what's been happening. We just got a, actually, an email from the head of our association, and only 50 school systems have submitted their plan, so we're, I'm very glad we're not a race to the top community because we can maybe learn from the mistakes of others. The other two key areas is, I promised a strategic plan by the end of December. We have a good one that we really worked hard on, and I will bring the committee together so that we can firm it up and bring it to the school committee for approval. And near Indiana, my heart is ensuring that we build a new high school. As everyone knows, that is on hold because of an appeal to, based on DEP's decision to supersede an audit, and we attended a pre-trial hearing last Tuesday. A hearing is set for October 25th. Good news for us is that the AUL was thrown out because it does not belong in the DEP, under DEP jurisdiction, and the hearing officer was very clear in what he expects from the appellants moving forward. So, we will keep you informed, and I'm hoping that we can conclude this sooner rather than later and be able to begin construction this year. I will, if it happens that this gets settled, I will come to you with a proposal to start construction. And construction means knocking down a gymnasium. So, everyone that is using permits for any of the buildings in town, school buildings, we have told them that there's a possibility of two-week notice that we will have to change that. Mr. Harrison has an alternative schedule, actually scheduled, in case, with the hopes that that happens. So, I'll keep you informed. And lastly, something that we're going to be talking about is piloting a one-to-one program at the middle school and Bring Your Own Device program at the high school that we're hoping to put in place in the middle of the year. All right, tonight, you'll hear the first pieces of that recommendation, so. I will bring these back to this first September meeting for approval.
Does anyone have questions or comments on them? I had some on the technology, but I think it'll be, they'll be answered in the next session, so I'm going to hold off on that one. Thank you. All right, and so our next item of new business, I believe, Mr. Ellis may be coming forward.
Yes, we'd like to invite Mr. Ellis up to the microphone to talk about the work that's gone on this summer in the tech department and what our hopes are. This is not something you'll be asked to vote on tonight, this is just the first presentation.
All right, so, did you want to go over the safety policy first, or just the, just the one more?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So, there's a short...
I emailed all of you this, I've forgotten to put it in the...
Essentially, what this is, there's an, there was an update to the childhood, the Children's Internet Protection Act that stated that by July 1st, that everyone have some updated language. They're just trying to modernize it. That included the things that are in here, they kind of threw out like a general template of some additional language to add to our current internet use policy, and then just adopt it. We have to keep our CIPA, be CIPA certified in order to receive our E-rate funding and that kind of thing. It's pretty simple stuff, and we're working on a much larger, new electronic use policy, so that'll be incorporated into the new one as well. So, this year, well, this summer, we worked on, we worked on the middle school wireless, as the superintendent indicated, in order to begin our one-to-one initiative. You've probably got the, I kind of drew out an outline that goes through the one-to-one, kind of what our outlook is at the moment. And if you look at that, A and B is finished. The wireless is up and running at the middle school right now. The next step would be to, with approval, go through the high school, kind of, we've set kind of a section of the school that we've kind of determined would be good to kind of do a one-to-one pilot in. It's cheaper, easier to kind of put everything in one place, the teachers who want to do it, the equipment, everything in one place. We're going to try to run that, cut the cost down. My guys are going to try to run all the wiring, so we're just paying for hardware. And anything we do purchase for that is easily mobile. We can, you know, unclip all of the things and have it, we could unclip all of the hardware and take it out in a couple hours and move it to another building. So, no money is really going to be wasted doing a, doing a, setting up a network in the high school. So, moving on to that, we've also, at the same time, we have purchased four carts to do, like a mock one-to-one or one-to-one pilot at the middle school. We batted around a lot of ideas of how to do that. We've got the four carts, each have 25 netbooks on them, they're, of course, they'll all be wireless in the school. We don't, we couldn't figure out really on our own, and we didn't, we decided we didn't want to do was to go ahead and make a plan right now without all the teacher input from the building. So, we're going to meet with the teachers when, when we can. I know there's, there's a lot, you know, we have very little time, but maybe a staff meeting or something, try to figure out how and who wants to do the pilot and how we Well, that, that pretty much wraps it up. I mean, there's some additional things with, with the middle school in terms of, I mean, with the high school in terms of doing the pilot and kind of mimicking stuff for the new school with, with PLNs and BYOD, so we're looking forward to trying to hash all that out, but this is kind of a, just a overview, so.
What we're hoping to do is to meet with the middle school teachers. We've quite, actually, I think eight went to the Burlington High Summer Project to, because we want teachers who are ready and have been trained to use the devices, so we will be coming to you with a proposal of how we'll go about doing that. In addition, there's capability now for a teacher to take out, take five laptops, netbooks, and have them in the classroom, do, you know, individual instruction with some of the students, which is something a middle school has not been able to do since the old computers, you know, died out. We certainly would love to have, do a one-to-one program for the school system. We can't afford it. You're going to have to make some, some choices because the, the school systems that have them, I just, you know, everybody talks about Burlington, and Burlington's very lucky. If they have a SUN System grant, an endowment from, from the company that worked in that community for all those years, it's paying for all of the, the devices, and we don't have that, that luxury, so...
Infrastructure.
We're going to need to figure out the best way to move forward, so we want to try a pilot, Bring Your Own Device, in the second semester at the high school, but we will come to you beforehand. Obviously, any student who can't afford one, we would have a set of netbooks that students could, could use, utilize, but it's going to be interesting to see down the road what people are going to be using because, well, some people's choice is an iPad. I mean, I use my phone for everything. I take notes on my phone, I use it for communication, so, and I, my iPad sits on my desk, so I'm not sure, and I don't want to be put into a place where we're just focusing on, we're getting a lot of pressure from Apple on purchasing i- on, we're getting a lot of pressure from Apple on purchasing iPads, and we're not ready to do that or interested in doing that at this point. Technology department's done a great job of research, and even some of the teachers talk about, you know, they'd rather use a netbook because they can print right away. Students can print what they need. So, this is going to be, I think that I would rather be cautious and take our time in implementing and do it right than have a thousand netbooks out in the district and not being used properly. So, we look forward to coming back in a few months, once we've heard from the teachers, because we want it to be the teachers to own this as well. So.
Dr. Quick. I have a question about Burlington, since, you know, we've been hearing about Burlington. But I don't know, how are they doing with their one-to-one with the iPads? Because, I mean, the iPads, A, are limited. I mean, I love my iPad, but it is limited. I can't do a lot of things that you can do on a netbook and a computer. And secondly, how, you know, the limitations of, it's an electronic device that it can become, it's not big, but it can become, some kid can drop it, things like that. I mean, what are they finding in Burlington? How is it, how is this program working for them so far?
Well, parents have to take out insurance policies on the devices. There's no data that's telling us that Burlington students are achieving higher than Wilmington because of iPads. Interestingly enough, there's a lot of interesting anecdotal data that comes from teachers there. I can get your report on it, but I don't think we've seen anything written. Have we, have you?
No, in terms of like hard data?
Data, yeah.
No. I mean, I will say that, you know, they, and they say that, you know, if a student loses, say, like an iPad, or they break their iPad, it's sort of the same thing as, you know, they lost their book bag full of their $100 piece books that we purchased, and the parent then has to pay the school for the books that they lost. So, it's, it's similar.
And I, well, I ask this also because, I mean, obviously, I, there must be a way to track these types of things because of the fact, and I'll give an example. When I was in college, we each had to have a laptop, they weighed eight pounds back then, but we each had to have a laptop. I had my laptop stolen. My parents were unhappy because they had to pay a lot of money to replace it. You know, things like that. I mean, what are safeguards are in place to keep so that this won't happen? If kids have an iPad, you know, something like that, that's, that, you know, theft could be a problem, things like that. What kind of safeguards are in place for that type of?
They did do, I'm not sure, there are, there are like, what do I want to say, LoJack type, if you think of that, for, applications for the iPad where you can track.
Like a GPS.
Where it is, right. I'm not sure if they use that, but you could. I know that they did a lot of financing options for replacement in several different options for different tiers of, you know, people. It seemed like they did a good job of really covering their bases in terms of people having, you know, from, you know, different economic situations to be able to, you know, fund a replacement insurance policy. So.
Okay. Mr. Hayes.
Two comments. One comment towards Dr. Quick's question. Patrick Larkin, who was the principal of Burlington High School, now is the assistant superintendent, he actually has a blog where he blogs about technology issues, and he actually just recently, I follow his blog, and he just recently posted an honest review of what's been going on with their, their one-to-one iPad. He talks about the pros and the cons, and some of the questions that you ask, he addresses in that, in that blog. So, I think it's PatrickLarkin.com.
I'll send it out to you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And then I'm going to take my, another 60 seconds. I just wanted to take some time to thank technology coordinator Neil Ellis and his team for developing these goals and plans. And I think Wilmington is ready to take these first few steps anyway towards a one-to-one learning environment. And I applaud the district for what I think, I think the district went about it the right way to get here. We've been patient, learning from the successes and failures of the early adapting districts around the state. We've surveyed parents last year on the concept, and while I hope more feedback is solicited, I believe that parents are generally supportive of a one-to-one learning environment for their children. They certainly have questions, though, I'm sure. We are already planning professional development around one-to-one learning environments. For example, I saw managing your BYOD classroom workshop listed in the professional development handbook. We're taking a careful, thoughtful approach to the one-to-one learning environments rather than dive in district-wide without the necessary planning. We are piloting modest programs at the middle school and the high school level, learning firsthand the best practices for teaching and learning in a one-to-one environment. We now have a policy and procedures in place that will, to the best of our ability, ensure that students are using their devices for educational purposes and not, for example, viewing inappropriate material. And we are very aware of the fiscal realities that confront both the district and the Wilmington taxpayer. And one suggestion I do have, though, Neil, and I'm sure you've already started this process, but I ask that you look exhaustively at all possible funding methods for one-to-one learning environments. But at first blush, I think the Bring Your Own Device policy may be the way to go, and I strongly agree with the provision that if a student cannot afford to purchase a device, the district must loan one to that student. So, you know, I expect no child to be left behind. And I also want the necessary accommodations, whatever those accommodations may be, for special education students to be put in place to ensure that every student is given the opportunity to thrive in a one-to-one learning environment. And finally, I hope the district will explain these one-to-one initiatives to parents clearly, thoroughly, and over and over and over again. And putting a laptop or iPad in the hands of every high, middle school and high school student potentially is going to change the way the teachers teach and the ways that students learn. It's a 21st century paradigm shift in education, and we need the support of students, teachers, and particularly parents if a one-to-one learning environment, especially a Bring Your Own Device program, is going to be successful in Wilmington. So, thank you again, Neil, for everything you and your team does for the district. I'm very excited. This is truly, high school, one-to-one, very exciting. They're, they're near each other in terms of excitement for me. And I look forward to the committee receiving periodic updates on the progress of these pilot programs.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, here comes the other side. All right, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I am thrilled to hear this, that you've basically slowed down and that you are having the teacher input, because I know that at one point, teachers only had a couple of weeks' notice to be able to go to the Burlington course, and if they weren't going, they were told they weren't going to be able to participate in the end of this year. So, I'm glad that's all changed. And so, I'm assuming that if you didn't make the program at Burlington, you're meaning that some of these other teachers can also use those laptops.
I didn't have any restrictions in place.
Yeah, no, the original proposal from my office was that.
Okay.
We need to have, the restriction is, teachers have to have training.
Right. But hopefully, there'll be more training for the teachers who couldn't make, you know, had vacation in the summer and couldn't make it. And so, I think that's important because I think there are some teachers who you'll pick up, who you, you'd be sorry to miss their expertise also. The other part is, when we talked about this at the end of last year, I thought we were talking about iPads, and I'm glad that we're not talking about iPads when I saw how much they cost. However, I did read some articles on it because I thought we were talking about iPads tonight. And one of the things that they said was that the iPads, one of the things about iPads that's not, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to learn all about this, that the iPads do have apps, and that you could have a number of educational apps which you do not get on the laptop. And the laptop is a whole different usage than using the laptop, you'd be using it a whole different way than you would have been the iPads. And so, it's extremely important, which I'm glad to hear you're saying, that the teachers come up with ways to use them before we hand them over and just say, here they are in the back corner of your room. If you haven't been able to get together with, and I think this is a great time for teacher collaboration, because if you can get together to work on projects or work on delivery, the delivery system, because we have to keep in mind it's a tool for a delivery system. But I also, in talking with different people about this, could we just check with the high school? You have some of these laptops, the little notebooks in the high school, and is there an issue with how to have them work correctly, little fingers and things? Do high school people have bigger fingers than we'll? I know it sounds weird, but I'm hearing that.
Are you talking about the keyboard size?
Yeah.
The keyboard size in the netbooks we bought at the middle school is 90% the size of a, of a full keyboard.
Okay.
What we've found in the past is that you or I would probably like, not like it, getting used to it, because we've used a keyboard our whole lives.
Right.
But the kids didn't care when we rolled out these netbooks here, like they don't, they didn't care. They weren't used to typing on something larger. So, that's, that's, you know, that's basically, but you're right. I mean, part of this plan, by getting everybody in one place in the high school is to kind of form those groups so they can meet together and talk about their delivery of the instruction with the, with the tools.
And the one thing that I'm not sure about at all, and I'll be really interested to hear what you bring back to us, is the Bring Your Own Devices. And teachers sharing rooms or going to different rooms to have the devices all down in this one wing. I'm going to be interested to see how you can pull that one off, so to speak, because that seems like a real challenge with the staff.
But we've already worked with Principal Tracy on classroom spaces. I think we still do it at a street.
At a street.
At a street wing, so that he knows to, that we're going to be scheduling classrooms in there where teachers will be using.
So, they won't give up their whole room? They won't give up their room, they'd just be using it for different?
They'll be moving.
Like Monday, oh, they will be moving.
Yeah, they'd be moved in there permanently for the rest of the year.
It'll be, like, for example, the social studies and language arts teacher working on a project, which we have some integrated discipline, they would be down there for the whole.
The whole year.
Half a year.
Oh, for the half a year. Okay, great. All right. One of the things that I had just done was that these things, the laptops, can fail because of the lack of educational software, so that people aren't, they don't have something they can just plug in, and there it is. Lack of curriculum that exploits the software and lack of professional development. And I feel like we're addressing all those areas, so that, that makes me very hopeful. The success of these is that the students use the devices as essential tools for learning, that they're not just, they're not just supplemental, that this has to be part of the major use. And it sounds to me like we have that, too. So, I think that my worries may be laid to rest here, so.
We hope so. We're moving slowly.
Yes, so, thank you very much. Do we have any other questions, guys? Mrs. Bonish.
So, for the pilot program for the high school, are you piloting with a group of kids or just a group of classrooms?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, it would be both.
Yeah.
And the way, I've talked to Principal Tracy about this, and the way we'd like to do it, well, there are a lot of different things we've talked about, but one of the things that we definitely want to do is in the syllabus for the classes that are for the second, that second half of the year, to indicate that the class would be like a BYOD class. So, we would have students who wanted to participate with the teachers who wanted to participate. You know, it all doesn't always work out for scheduling-wise or whatever, and we could, we'll come to that bridge and cross it when we, when we get to it. But, yeah, there, there's a whole student portion there that we, and we've also talked about different levels of the use of those devices, which, you know, you don't have to be like all-out, all-class, whatever. And you can, you can move into it. You could do, okay, for the first week, we'll do, you know, five minutes of class or whatever it is. And maybe the first month, you just use the device as a, as an e-reader to use to all the, everybody gets their textbooks on the device, and everybody just kind of gets used to reading on their device or getting the content through their device without necessarily doing the creation on their device. Like, the iPad's really good for content delivery, but for creation of content, you know, spreadsheets, Word documents, PowerPoints, everything, it's horrific. So, which is one of the reasons we went with netbooks, because they're much more adept for that. So, yeah, trying to figure it out.
Mr. Hayes.
Just two follow-up questions, Neil. First of all, for the BYOD pilot program, any idea on how much it's going to cost for you to install the wireless network? And is that money coming from your existing technology budget? You're able to afford that?
Yes. It, I don't have a price on that right now, so I couldn't really tell you. I mean, I.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah.
And Neil, my second question, and I don't think you're going to have the answer to this, too, but this would be something that I really would be interested in knowing before I voted on anything, short-term or long-term. How many high school students currently own a device, like a laptop or an iPad or, you know, a netbook, that they could bring to school?
I'd like, I'd like, love to know that myself.
We'll find out.
I would say it's a, it's a large percentage. And part of it is, I think we'll save everybody a lot of money, because if they've already got the device, why pay for a second device through your taxes? Just have the kid bring in the device.
And I think that's the appealing aspect to the Bring Your Own Device.
Right. Yeah.
Mrs. Carroll. And another question is, too, is that, you know, if a parent goes out in the middle school and buys a device for their child, want to be able to make sure they'll be able to use it at the high school, too, so they're not repurchasing, you know, like the middle schools say the netbooks, but now the high school is the iPads. You know, people with multiple children, that might not be very affordable. So, we want to make sure that the both schools, especially for eighth graders, you know, are in, together.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. I think, I think what we're doing is we're kind of implementing the network so the kids can connect, say, to the internet and use a lot of the cloud services. Whatever device that they're most comfortable with using to accomplish their daily tasks in the school, they'll be able to connect on our network and be safe. So, that's really where we're coming from.
Any other questions are coming? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. We look forward to the next visit.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item of business, public comments. Public comments?
One question for Neil. How are you going to, like, know what is on, if some things are on device, kids could have things on their computer that maybe they shouldn't be looking at in school? Like, how are you going to monitor that?
If it's their own device, the only thing we can do if it's their own device, for the most part, is we are firewall. So, when they connect through our wireless, they'll be going through a firewall endpoint. With cell phones and a lot of devices now, you can create your own, say, like MiFi wireless internet within a little group, like right here, I can just turn it on with my phone, and you can all connect through my phone and get out to the internet. And that just goes out. There's nothing we could really do with that. I mean, I think it comes down to parents and policies parents have with their children and how they use the internet.
That was a good question. Yeah. Thank you. Any other? Mrs. Bonish. Call this one. I have a card.
It's from the Wilmington High School varsity hockey Division II state champions. On behalf of Wilmington Boys Division II Ice Hockey State Champions, I'm writing to thank you for not only recognizing us after winning, but for believing in us throughout the whole year. It's been an honor for us to have fans like you who followed us the whole year. Without a school committee, we wouldn't have such a wonderful school full of amazing teachers or coaches. Once again, thank you. Wilmington Boys Ice Hockey Team. With our sincere thanks, Dalton Rowley.
Very nice.
And I actually got a plaque today from Steve Scanlon from the hockey team with that picture. It's really nice.
Oh, nice. Excellent. Let me see. Future meeting dates and agenda items are September 12th will be our next meeting and September 26th. After that?
At seven o'clock.
So, oh, at seven o'clock. Even if Mr. and Mr. Givencum. And I just wanted to say one thing. I wanted to thank WCTV and Dawn and Juan, our cohorts here. Been here for years and doing a great job. I just wanted to clarify something that came up at the beginning of the summer, and that is that the school committee is, has a private, basically, it's a private meeting held in public. And the same thing with, like, the Board of Selectmen, other meetings. And WCTV, as a courtesy, and the school committee as, for transparency and every other reason that we'd like to have them, our meetings publicized, we have WCTV show our meetings. But there's no state law. Some people seem to think there's a law or something that says you have to have them televised. There is no such thing. And so, I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that occasionally, when we do not have a meeting, tele. we do not have a meeting televised, the superintendent and I have made that decision for reasons that are really viable in our minds. And so, we wanted people to know, there's no, no reason behind it. It's just practical for a practical reason. We might not have one or two meetings televised. But of course, we try to have them all televised. We thank Dawn and Ron. We couldn't, really, we couldn't have it televised without them. They're here with us. They give as much time, in fact, more, takes them a good hour to set up. It takes them a good hour to, to break down. And they do that for the town. And so, we thank you very much, Dawn and Ron. And we want everybody to know, WCTV has never canceled us. They do not cancel us. If we do not have a meeting televised, it's because we canceled. So, and we want to thank them. We have a great relationship with them, and we certainly want to keep that going. Okay. And so, do we have any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Quick.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Mrs. Carroll. Okay. All those in favor, unanimous. All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.